All right, let's uh, is everyone on a kill list? Oh, okay, there's Betty. I'm not sure who else is on the line.
Could we take another quick roll call just to confirm who is still here so we're just to be sure?
Yeah, I think that's good.
That'd be okay.
Sure.
Again, we can't see and I just want to confirm who's still present.
Okay. Brooke?
Yep.
Betty?
Yes.
Josh? Josh? Brian? Mike Mibler?
Here.
Mike May?
Here.
John Robbins?
Here.
Georgia? Georgia? Kimberly Wayne?
Here.
George and Josh.
Josh and Georgia. We don't have any-
Josh is logged in but he's muted currently. He may have stepped away for a moment.
Oh, okay, yep.
Brooke, is there any way we can adjust the agenda at this point? I know we've approved it, but there is no way we're going to get through it all.
I'm going to try to pick up on some of the time the next, if I may.
Oh, yeah.
And then after this, the board communication policy and process, I'm going to resend an email that Dave Tilly had sent around to the board about sort of prompts or responses when you get certain types of questions, questions about employment matters, questions about matters that are pending before the board, particular questions regarding Davenport. And these answers in this template will be safe harbor should you choose to give an answer. You know, one of the, some of the, you know, stock answers could be the, you're welcome to bring that to public comment, you're welcome to bring that to the next board. The board makes its decisions as a group rather than individuals. I can't make that decision on my own. I will bring it to the department or I will bring it to the next board meeting. So I will recirculate this around and make myself available for your January agenda if it continues to be a problem, but unless, unless there's an issue, I think you can read for yourselves.
Yeah, I think that's good. I would also just add that, because sometimes I get emails and I don't, like I could respond by, maybe I need additional information or something like that. So I sometimes, or if it's an email about maybe, and if PRs make that coming up, I never respond to those. I just forward them on to legal and I just, you know, just to put Thomas on notice that maybe, you know, you shouldn't be responding to those things if you have a party contacting you if they're coming before the bar and you should not be responding to those emails. Just forward them to Thomas. But if there's something that you would like to respond to, but you would, you need kind of specific information to, you can always reach out to, you know, if you're someone that I'm in depth. Okay. Whoa, that's weird. I don't know if you all heard my chants or anything.
No, you guys didn't? I was just saying, just providing a little bit of context that this was when I did meet with each one of the board members, this was a common concern that came up. So I just wanted to make sure that we addressed it today so people knew how to move forward when they receive emails.
So I guess the question is, when all of us get the same email, do we all respond or is there one designated person?
If we all get the same email, I'm okay responding on behalf of the board. So if we all, if you see that everyone is listed in that, then sometimes we do it individually, but we all get the same email too. So if that, if you get an email, you can always just forward it to me and just say, you know, Kim does this a lot, like, did you see this? Did you get this as well? And I'll say, yes, I did or no, I didn't. So sometimes we do it individually, but we all get the same exact email. And sometimes you just have like, you know, all of our names on it and they're just emailing it to all of us. So, and sometimes you're just emailing, maybe it's something that's more of local tier area than they might just email you individually and not email the rest of the board. So, but yeah, I'm okay responding on behalf of the board if everyone's okay with that. If it's, if it's an email to all of us or this is the one that we all received. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, perfect. All right, alternate achievement standard review.
Good afternoon, everybody. Madam President and Board Members, this is Dave Tilly, Bureau Chief over Leading Teaching and Learning Services. And with me today is Dr. Barb Guy, who is our State Director of Special Education, and Jennifer Dunn, who is a program consultant in the area of significant disabilities. We'll try also to help catch up, catch up on some time here. We'll be speaking related to Tab T and your binder, if you've got that. Today's conversation, and I'm going to ask Jennifer if you would, please go ahead and throw our slides up quickly.
Yeah. And David, candidate, could you please allow me to share my screen?
I will keep going.
You have, you have rights, Jennifer. You should be able to as a panelist.
It says host disabled screen, participant screen sharing is my notice that I'm getting. There we go, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Yep, I can get started while you're doing that. So today's conversation is the first installment in a two-part conversation related to the board's adoption of alternate achievement standards for individuals with significant cognitive disabilities in the state of Iowa. So Jennifer, you go to the first slide, please. So the context to this is the State Board of Education has the authority in Iowa for adopting both contents and performance standards. So determining what students in Iowa are expected to know and be able to do while we as a department help identify those things, it's actually the board's, State Board's responsibility to adopt those formally. All Iowa Core standards have been adopted in the past 15 years in reading, mathematics, science, social studies, and 21st century skills by the State Board. These standards in turn then are used to drive the development of our large-scale assessments for all students. So our assessments are intended to reflect the content that are present in our, our standards. So recently, as we all know, our state large-scale assessments, the Iowa State Assessment of Student Performance, so or student progress, it should say, and our Dynamic Learning Maps, we've adopted new assessments in the last few years. And when a state does that, the federal government requires that the state submit the, those assessments for what's called peer review. Peer review is a process where our colleagues from across the country and experts review our tests to ensure that our tests are high quality and actually, in fact, measuring the standards that, that we as a state have adopted. We just recently received our feedback and received good news. We actually got very good initial rankings, ratings on our tests. But in the feedback, the reviewers noted that our standards upon which the ISAS were adopted, were developed, those standards were adopted by the State Board. So the reading standards, the mathematics standards, and the science standards that our test is based on had been adopted by the State Board. But the standards for students with significant cognitive disabilities, and so we're talking now typically about 1% or fewer of our students who take the Dynamic Learning Map, which is our alternative assessment, those standards were not adopted by the State Board. And our peer reviewers gave us feedback and said it would be, it would be most appropriate for those standards to come before your State Board and that those standards be adopted by the board in the same way that our reading, math, and science and other standards are adopted, which is the genesis of this conversation. So what we wanted to do today is just provide you an orientation, a very brief orientation to what these alternate achievement standards are and why we are adopting them. Today is a discussion item. There will not need to be a vote on today for the standards, but we will bring these standards, we will give you the time between this meeting and next meeting to review those standards. We'll have another presentation at the next board meeting and our hope would be that the board would feel comfortable at that time adopting the alternate achievement standards for our students with significant cognitive disabilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Guy. Barb, you are muted.
I have a new strategy, Dave. There was somebody else in the room I was talking to and I just finished that conversation.
Okay.
People buying that one? No.
I'm going to use that.
So thank you with that beginning. Good to be in front of you today and I appreciate your taking on this topic. I'm not going to read the slide to you. I just want to point out a couple of points on it. So the intention of this slide is to tell you that an alternate achievement standard, what we're talking about in general sense of an alternate achievement standard is making that bridge from the content standards at the same grade level for students who are taking the ISAS to, for those students who are on Dynamic Learning Maps or as Dave has said, about 1% of the popular, of our student population who have significant intellectual disabilities. And, you know, typically maybe developing their cognitive abilities might be anywhere from six months to 18 months, maybe a little bit more than that, although their age is much, much older than that. So alternative achievement standards do not, they're not a separate, they're not alternatives. Some states you may hear talk about extended standards. And in our state, we refer to them as alternate achievement standards in the sense when I, when I think about extended, you think about them as being made larger or prolonged. And we're not, we are actually doing same, access to the same grade level content that would be in the standard for anybody in fourth grade, but at the developmental level of skills and knowledge for somebody who is intellectually has a disability. And again, for the sake of time, I'm just going to not go into more details on that. Let Jennifer talk about it because I think when you see what some of the examples she has, they will speak for themselves. Jennifer?
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to the board for letting us present today. So I'm giving you three different examples. So this is the first one, it's an English Language Arts example. So the first bullet tells us what an, at the Iowa Core, what a general ed student would be doing at third grade. And the second bullet down below is the Iowa Core Essential Element. So it is aligned to the Iowa Core with less depth, breadth, and complexity. So as you'll see, instead of being able to identify multiple things in the Essential Element, students are only looking at identifying the feelings of the character in a story. And then, so that's our English Language Arts example. I also have a math example for you as well. So once again, we are looking at what the Iowa Core standard, and this is a high school level standard. So we're looking at, at what the Gen Ed standard is and then also what that Essential Element is. And you'll see that they're, you know, once again, they're still really linked together just more appropriate for a student who has a significant cognitive disability. And then the last example is a science, and this is a middle school level science. And once again, we are looking at how can a student with a significant cognitive disability access general education standards? Okay, and in your packet, there is also information with links to the, to the documents. So we have our Iowa Core Essential Elements for English Language Arts, Math, Science. And then we also have our Dynamic Learning Maps Iowa webpage, which should be linked as well. And then what questions do you have?
Could you, could you back that slide up, please?
That one or further back?
No, that was, I didn't have those links in mind.
Oh, okay.
Those, just so the board members know, those links are in the cover page in Tab T, so you don't have to write them down. You should be able to go directly into that tab and be able to click right on them. I will warn you, these documents are extensive. They're very, very detailed and they're very, very thorough. And it's, they're, they're here for your review and your, your examination. It is not the expectation that you're going to become thoroughly versed in every single standard that, that is present here, but in fact, we wanted to make sure that you had access to the full documents to see the extensiveness of how these standards have been put together for our, our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities.
I, yeah, I just didn't scroll far.
Okay. The last one?
Operator error.
The, the last one, the Dynamic Learning Maps. Can we, can we get a link?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
So I mean, are there other, other questions?
Are these students typically integrated in the classroom or is, does learning take place out of the classroom, normal classroom?
Barb, do you want to take that one?
Sure, it could be any, any of the above. Iowa has one of the highest rates of integration of this population, but in talking with teachers, a lot of the core instruction, and it really does depend on age. I'd say we're more likely, Jennifer, I'm looking at you to make sure I'm reflecting the most recent conversation, but the younger the age, the more likely that they, the students will be with other students without disabilities. And as you get into high school and older, they're more likely to be educated with other peers with disabilities.
Other questions, comments at this point? Okay, here, hearing none. We will have the opportunity at the next meeting, this will be an item, an action item, hopefully on the next board agenda, at which point we will have an opportunity to address any questions that you have, once you've had a chance to review these core essential elements. And hopefully we will be able to have the State, State Board adopt these in a parallel manner to which they have other standards for students in Iowa. So with that, thank you very much for your time and your attention and we'll look forward to that presentation at your next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take this opportunity to head out. I have to go. So I'm going to have Betty. Betty?
Yeah?
Do you take it from here?
I can try. Are you leaving?
I am.
Okay. All right. Bye.
Toys collected.
Here, you want, you want to gavel, Betty? There you go.
All right. Number one, number 16, Annual Condition of Education Report.
Betty means business.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Right. I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully this works. Oh, David, I need you to do whatever you did for Jennifer. I'm having the same sharing issue. There we go. Okay. All right. So I don't know, can you see my screen okay? Are you, are you seeing my notes as well?
See it fine. We did focus.
Okay, great. So I'm Jay Pennington, Bureau Chief of the Bureau of Information and Analysis Services here at the Department of Ed. And I appreciate the opportunity to present the 2020 version of the Annual Condition of Education Report. The Annual Condition of Ed Report, for, for those that have been on the board for a while, come annually and, and present this, typically it's been in January. We actually pushed the production date to November. So we're kind of a couple of months ahead of where we typically would be. And really it's an opportunity to take a look at a number of, of measures across the state for the, you know, kind of where the, the system is in education. For the most part, what I'm going to be presenting is data from the 2019-20 school year. So what actually happened last year. You know, the Annual Condition of Ed Report is one of our flagship publications that we produce here at the department. It's one of the measuring sticks that we use as an agency to how we're do, to see how we're doing across a broad base of, of data. For those that are in person, we have paper copies for you. For those that are attending remotely, Heather's sending out a link to a PDF which will go on the department website. And there'll be a, a public release of that, so it'll be on the front page of the, of the department website soon. The Condition of Ed Report has a rich set of data. This is the 31st edition. It's 237 pages long. It covers a lot of the topic areas honestly that you've discussed in today's meeting, from things like student enrollment, student demographics, things like open enrollment. You guys talked this morning about the number of kids that are attending things like statewide voluntary preschool program. You'll find that data in the Condition of Ed Report. There's information on staff, the number of educators, administrators within our schools. There's information on curriculum data and then obviously a ton of performance data, things like graduation rate, student assessment results, ACT data, special education information, and school finance. So in 15 minutes, I can only cover a really small portion of this report and strongly encourage you to spend the time looking through it at a later date. So this is really going to be a drive-by. There's a, a couple of stats in each area. And again, this is reflected for the most part of the 1920 school year. So the other thing I just want to mention, there's been a lot of discussion about the opportunities throughout the day, things like achievement gap and equity as a focus area of the board. And obviously there's a ton of information in this publication on those topics. I'm going to show you some highlights. So you talked a lot about opportunities. I'm going to focus really on a lot of positive trends that we can, we've seen over the last year in the education system. So the first up, talk a little bit about students and schools. So this gives you a, about, you know, a 30-year and a 20-year view of the percent of students and the demographic makeup of those student populations. So you can see here, you know, in 89-90, you know, we, the state of Iowa had roughly a little over 5% of students who are minority. And that's increased fivefold. And in the most recent year, 25%, just over 25% of students in Iowa schools and are a student of color. And you can see here, the biggest increase really are in the African-American or black student population. And the largest increase really is Hispanic students. And at the same time, you've seen a commensurate decline or decrease in the white student population. So significant changes in the students that we serve as a state. Shifting here, this gives you a little bit of information about district size and some of the changes that you've seen, and this is a 20-year view. So on the left-hand side, we have the number of students in each school. So the first one are the percentage of schools that are under 300 students to the percentages of students, of schools that serve over 7,500 students. So you can see here some of the, you know, percent or point changes across time. And really what this shows you is that it's sort of pulling from the middle. So we're seeing a number or an increase in districts that are smaller and an increase in the districts that are larger, but those middle-sized districts are, are disappearing. It also provides a breakdown of the number of students served by each of these enrollment size categories. And you can see here the percent of students served. And, you know, the one, the stat that I think really jumps to the top here is that in Iowa, you've got 11% of districts that educate 53% of the student population. So that other 89 serves that other 47% of districts. So you, so you have a wide variety of districts, lots of really big districts, but also more significantly, a lot of smaller districts. I'll talk a little bit about average salary of public school teachers. This is actually data published from the National Education Association because it allows us to do sort of national comparisons. And, and it, you know, you can see here obviously a steady increase in salary overall, but I think what this really points that out is, you know, roughly over this period of time, a little over a decade, you can see the gap between the national average and Iowa starting to decrease. So it's about $7,000 in the 07-08 school year, down to about 50, or I'm sorry, $4,800 in the most recent year. And two major sort of policy initiatives have happened across this period of time. The first is the Teacher Leadership Supplement, which is a $250 million recurring amount that is being put in the system. And this is outside of sort of, you know, someone mentioned earlier, the state supplemental aid increase. This is just specific money going directly to increase overall average salaries with the intended purpose to make Iowa more competitive nationally for teacher salary. And the other major initiative that's happened during this time is the Teacher Leadership and Compensation System, which is about $150 million. So annually, you know, 250 million going directly to increase overall salaries. And then that additional 150 million going to create those teacher leadership pathways in that system. So along with that infusion of dollars has made Iowa more competitive. This is where Iowa stands in those national rankings that NEA puts out. There was a slight decline in the most recent year. You know, when, when I started actually in 2007, you know, one of the first projects they had me work on was to estimate, you know, what the impact of that $250 million would do. And then certainly I worked extensively on the modeling with the teacher leadership system. But my projections at the time was that, you know, eventually we'll catch up and jump into the top half nationally in overall salary. And, and as you can see, that infusion of dollars in both of those policy initiatives really did have, or has had an impact overall in raising teacher salary and making Iowa more competitive. Next? Yes, please.
Can you wrap up in about five minutes?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you wrap up in about five minutes?
Sure. Sure. I will attempt to do that. Um, the other thing that you'll see is uh, there has been an increase in just the overall number of teachers, right, as you begin to create those teacher leadership pathways, you also need to add teachers in order to backfill. Um, in some cases where ki- uh, where educators are getting release time, um, either a hundred percent outside of the classroom or or whatever their uh, teacher leader system looks like. Um, so in particular, um, uh, you can see a significant increase um, of about just under three thousand teachers over this period of time. Um, lastly, uh, I I wanna um, to show a couple of other things. Uh, this gets into the sort of curriculum changes, uh, and this shows about a nine-year trend. Um, so you can take a look at, uh, this is for the class of two thousand and nine, the percent of students as an example that took Algebra II um, and how that's changed significantly over that period of time. Um, in the most recent year, all of these went up compared to the prior year with the exception, um, uh, well, I guess they all went up, so so that's certainly a a good trend to see. Um, the last thing I'll just show you is we do have a companion um, version called the online condition of education report. Um, and uh, so can you see this website?
Yes.
Okay, great. So um, so the online version really brings the publication to life. It allows you, in this particular example, these are state-level numbers, the percentage of of all students, um, the percent that are free or reduced-priced lunch. Um, you can also localize this, so if you wanted to look at any particular district, you can select that district. Um, this is the enrollment trend uh, uh, view. Um, uh, if you use the menus, um, uh, you can see a couple of others, other views. So um, one thing that uh, I think folks talked a little bit about um, earlier was like the number of uh, superintendents. Um, so if you go into the staffing and look at staff characteristics by group, um, the first thing it'll land on are the different groups, so administrators, general instruction, special education, uh, et cetera. But if you just look at this line, uh, and click on superintendents, you can see that for the three-hundred-and-twenty-seven school districts, we have roughly two-hundred-and-sixty-three superintendents serving those three-hundred-and-twenty-seven districts. Um, another focus area that the the board has looked at really is trying to recruit and um, uh, you know, I just showed you the uh, changing student population. And so the question around, you know, uh, what are the leaders and what are the percent minority? Um, so do do the leaders in our schools, do our educators really represent the students that we're teaching? Um, and you can see here, if you click on uh, regular education, you can see that below three percent of uh, educators, regular ed teachers are um, uh, teachers of color. Um, and then again, you can look at this by AEA, you can look at uh, this uh, for a particular district. Um, the last area I'll mention before I wrap up is one area we did add um, is this high school course-taking data. Um, so I, uh, yeah, I just showed you that last slide on curriculum. Um, you can also uh, click here and then um, take a look at um, you know, uh, the percent of students in any given districts that are taking Algebra II, that are taking chemistry, um, those kinds of uh, analyses. Um, so I'll wrap it up in the interest of time. Um, I could do an hour-long or kind of a mul- multiple hours uh, on uh, the tremendous amount of data um, that's in the publication. Uh, there's a lot of folks across the agency uh, that contribute to this publication. Um, so take a to- take uh, some time uh, and take a look at it when you get a chance.
Thank you, Jay, that, I think it helped for you to walk us through that website. And now I think it's incumbent upon all of us as board members to go in and look at that website. Since we've cut him short on his presentation, um, do pay attention to that data. Thank you.
Share the, share the link. Can you share that link that you were on, Jay?
Yeah, absolutely, here, I'll, I'll drop it in the chat here, um, and it's part of the press release.
Yeah, David, David already put it in the chat, so just go to your chat link and look it up.
One step ahead of me, thank you, David.
Okay, that was the PDF, okay, but, okay.
Got it. Yeah, there's the link. Okay, Tom Cooley, go, fast.
Okay, well, I can, I can make the SBRC report real fast, uh, you know, in fact, I could send it uh, uh, send it to uh, just in a hard copy if you would like. Uh, it certainly won't take the full amount of time that's scheduled. So ho- I'll, I'll leave that up to you if you want me to send that separately. Uh, I can do so and then uh, catch up a little bit uh, through the presentations.
I think you should send it to us, but you know, if you can give us just a real cup, quick couple of minutes of what it is you're sending us.
Sure.
And then move in.
Yeah, so so the state board in the past is, has requested um, just an update on actions taken by the School Budget Review Committee or SBRC. Um, you know, just to keep a conversation going between the two groups. So the SBRC last met in October. The October meeting is, is typically very short. Um, you have a handful of of things that that are are typical action items such as uh, uh, dealing with granting additional like uh, spending authority for asbestos removal and things like that. Um, and then we also tend to have a work session during, during that particular hearing. Uh, one thing, uh, a couple of things of note that happened in October, one is that we welcomed a new member to the SBRC, and that was Mary Jo Hainstock. Um, I don't know how many of you know Mary Jo, but she is recently retired as superintendent at Vinton-Shellsburg, and she is joining, replacing um, uh, Martha Bruckner, uh, who uh, was a a former superintendent at Council Bluff, so we welcomed her onto the group. Yeah, so that's uh, the, the primary, primary things uh, at that October meeting. Again, uh, dealing with hazard debatement requests, and we had uh, requests from a couple of districts on that. Um, we had also uh, identified two districts who were late filing on financial reports, and that's something that the SBRC keeps track of as well. Uh, so we had both Wayne and Colo-Nesco that uh, submitted reports uh, after the, the established deadline, and then uh, they will have to then report to the SBRC in December with a uh, corrective plan on how they're going to make sure they get their reporting done timely in the future. Uh, in the work session, we'll kind of jump down to that. Um, the main, one of the main topics that was discussed, uh, is probably in, of no surprise is, is uh, you know, the, the state board's recent action with Davenport. So you have to think of the timing of when these two things happened. So uh, the SBRC had just uh, uh, taken action on Davenport and the no, I'm sorry, the state board had just taken action on on Davenport, so the SBRC had a number of questions um, on that whole process. Um, and a- as a result, they've also uh, requested Davenport to appear in December to provide them an update on their progress as well. So even though um, that negative unspent balance situation uh, wa- was kind of addressed uh, you know, a, a couple of hearings ago, they are still very interested in knowing what's happening with Davenport and and how their, their fiscal situation is, is progressing.
And and they did also add that, you know, um, wanting to make sure that their work and our work, um, we kind of knew what each other was doing, and there was sort of a common understanding there, so maybe a little bit more alignment, which is part of why I think they wanted an update, wanted to make sure we had an update on what they were doing as well, yeah.
Yep, yeah, and they've, and and they've uh, continued some discussion as as well, not only on on uh, impact, you know, on on Davenport, but across the state as well, on COVID and the duration and and the, the impact that that's going to have on, on districts moving forward and some of the fiscal challenges they're uh, going to continue to face. So that, that's uh, pretty much a big, quick summary of what happened during the SBRC.
Well, I appreciate that, are there questions? I mean, you talk about a presentation that could be two days long, it's SBRC because it's and I don't pretend to begin to understand school budget or school finance, so.
Well, there we go, we could do a school finance one-on-one with the state board sometime.
Well, we probably should, that probably should be one of our work sessions. Questions for Tom? Okay, um, next up on our agenda is our Equity Committee update, and Kimberly has asked that maybe we postpone that till next meeting. It's getting late, we've lost several board members, um, or at least a couple of board members, and and that's, that's such an important topic that I don't want to rush it, and I do want everybody to hear it.
Did we ju- jump over our schools, our school-level reporting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did jump over that, no, go ahead, so.
See, I told you, I, you know, one way or the other, we'd get you caught back up, right?
No, not until three-twenty-five because we're gonna take Kimberly's report off, sorry.
Oh, not, not a problem, uh, and this is just more of of an awareness. Um, ESSA added a requirement for states and districts to report per pupil expenditures of federal, state, and local funds. And that is a a piece that uh, was originally supposed to happen for FY eighteen, but we had a one-year waiver on that. Uh, so we recently, just in October, um, were able to get the FY nineteen data added to the Iowa school performance profile. So I just want to show you where that's located and give you just a broad idea of what's in there. So hopefully now you're seeing the Iowa school performance profiles webpage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, there's a couple of different ways to to get to the information. First, I'm gonna just uh, quickly show you uh, where to find some state-level reference information. And you know, of course, uh, this is the same site that that Jay has shared with you in in the past where all of our student achievement data and things are. Uh, but within the additional metrics area, you will now see an option for pu- per pupil expenditures. So if you look at uh, the state-level information, what we've provided is just a a s- a high-level overview of of how those expenditures range uh, for high schools, middle schools, elementaries uh, across the state. Uh, we've broke that into three different tiers, and those tiers are simply for reference, they aren't ranking. So that's uh, really just uh, the third of the schools that have the lowest per pupil expenditures, the middle-third, and the upper-third. And uh, just because of the impact on some of the specially-funded programs, we also added for reference what the average expenditures are, the average per pupil costs uh, for uh, both English-language learners and the various uh, levels of special education students. And also in that narrative, you'll notice uh, a link to a couple of documents. One is the coding practices, uh, I just want to speak real quickly to that. This whole process, it really started um, in probably the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year of trying to put in a coding structure across the state that allows us to pull this kind of information uh, on behalf of the, the state and the individual districts. We've had a, a group that, that we've worked very close with that I want to kind of give a shout-out, shout-out to, and that's our school-level reporting advisory uh, that has been uh, comprised of school business officials from across the state. And we uh, tried to get large and small districts, all sorts of different uh, configurations of of schools. Um, a- and they've been just an outstanding group to work with. And I, I do have Cassandra Klein on uh, the panel here with me, and she has, has uh, uh, been kind of the point of contact on this work as well. So I just, I wanted to make sure that we gave her some recognition. And one of the documents uh, that you have in your handouts, tab W, is the document uh, that's called Per Pupil Expenditure Mounting Context. And that was compiled just to uh, help the public understand a, a little bit more about the differences that they may see from a, from a school-to-school standpoint. So now I'm gonna flip to uh, looking at a particular district. And I think just for the sake of the, the folks in the room there, I'm just going to use Iowa Falls as an example. Or try to use Iowa Falls as an example, there we go. So if you select a district and you do the same process and go to the additional metrics and the per pupil expenditures, you will see a breakdown by school. And I should point out that a school and a building is not uh, synonymous with this reporting. So uh, because the reporting specifically said by school, uh, we have some uh, districts that might have a single building, but they have three schools. So it's, uh, it's broke down to that level. Um, the detail that we provided, uh, again, aligns specifically with uh, ESSA. So you have both personnel costs, non-personnel costs. And then you also have those costs broken by revenue source. So those things that, that were uh, funded by state-local sources and those expenditures funded by federal sources. If you add personnel and non-personnel together, that will give you the same total as adding the state, local, and the federal together. So it just is a different breakdown. Uh, the, the top section are those uh, expenditures that, that uh, districts coded down to the school level. Uh, we also have uh, added in here other types of expenditures that weren't coded down to the school level. Uh, and that would be things like construction costs, uh, and students not directly served by the district, and so on. And then we also have a total district expenditure breakdown as well.
What would?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Students not directly served by the district, what would, who would that be?
Yeah, for example, you might have uh, students who are tuitioned out for services.
Oh.
Okay, uh, and those districts will still have uh, costs because they're paying that tuition. Um, but the, the reason we kind of broke it out like this is we were also trying to match um, the school-level expenditures to um, the, the school where the students' achievement data would be housed. Because uh, we know that there's some, some interest in trying to uh, take a look at per pupil spending and per pupil achievement, right? So again, uh, we can drill down a little bit here. Uh, but uh, one thing I wanted to point out is you can see the variance across the schools. And uh, part of that context document is trying to lay out uh, some of the reasons why that will occur. Uh, districts may get questions on why, why aren't the expenditures exactly the same, you know, across all, uh, across all schools. And uh, for those of us who've uh, worked, worked with schools, we know uh, there's a lot of differences that can happen building by building, right? So John, is there a certain building that you want to take a look at? Or a school?
Let's look at Pine View.
Okay. So we'll look at Pine View Elementary. So this takes the same information that was in the table that we looked at previously, that summarized down in that bottom part of the screen. But for each school, we tried to add additional context to give an idea of, you know, some of the differences that may be impacting that particular facility. So we know on this one, for example, that's just a kindergarten in grade one, served in that building. Again, the intent here is just to kind of give you a heads-up that that information is now in the system. It gives another reference for individuals who are interested in what's happening in their schools. And, you know, obviously, they can plug around and look at other schools as well. Currently don't have a comparison feature built in, but there's a lot of data that's been added. It was a huge undertaking. So thank you for giving me some time to share that with you.
Thank you. Are there questions?
No, just a comment. I know that our school business official has struggled a little bit with putting all the data in that was required by this ESSA reporting. And hopefully, that's all shaken out and everybody's got their categories and spending slots figured out so they can just slide things in a lot easier now.
Yeah. It's a challenge, right? Moving 327 districts to a different type of coding structure that allows that type of disaggregation. So hopefully, it's easier this year. The individuals who we've worked with, I know they're constantly giving feedback. Cassandra, I don't know if you want to jump in on that one or not, but, you know, she probably heard the brunt of, you know, some of the challenges associated with the reporting.
We did. You know, thankfully, the districts were really involved with giving feedback in addition to the wonderful work of our advisory districts. I also attended a number of IASBL regional meetings across the state over the past couple of years to purposefully solicit feedback based on the planning practices. And so the collective work of that feedback from the districts created new statewide financial coding practices that make sense to the districts and therefore gives us real data that can be reviewed.
Well, once again, there's tons of data on the website. And I challenge every board member to go in and take a look at one specific school district so you can have an opportunity to play around with that. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I tried to skip over you earlier.
Not a problem.
You know, Brooke leaves me with this agenda that's an hour behind, and I try to catch up. Okay, so Kimberly, you're okay if we delay your report?
Totally. I'm all about being on time.
All right. And so for, since we've already approved our agenda and that was part of the agenda, do we have to do anything different? Do we have a parliamentarian who... Or can we just table that till next meeting?
We can just table it.
Very good. Is there anything else that needs to come up before we sign off for today?
Have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, all the holidays. Anne, is there anything else you have?
I don't think so. You know, we'll continue to send you updates. We will update you certainly on any thing of significance with Davenport. We'll make sure we get you anything that's timely, that's separate from our weekly update that would be specific to your work. If there's anything you don't receive after today's meeting that you were expecting, please let us know. Otherwise, thank you again. These are long days. It's important work. We're grateful for your time and for everything that you do. So thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next time. Have a safe holiday. Please take care, and we'll see you all soon.
Thomas, Jim.
Everyone, stay safe.